Welcome back. We will be going to item number B2, location 430 Olive Street, Morro Bay. And I think Joan, you're going to be giving us an update on that. Before we start, I want to ask the rest of the commissioners if they have to disclose any communications that they may have had. Seeing none, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorensen. So the next item before you this evening is Agenda Item B2. It's a request for conditional use permit approval at 430 Olive Street to allow, in addition to an existing single-family residence with a non-conforming front setback. The property is located within the R1 Single Family Residential Zone outside of the Coastal Commission Appeals jurisdiction to the east of Main Street directly to the north of Cerito Peak. Now, while Cerito Peak is an environmentally sensitive area, the proposed addition is to be located within the existing patio area in a location that has seen extensive ground disturbance, and it's categorically exempt from CEQA. And you'll see its location in a subsequent slide. The current requirement of the Morro Bay Municipal Code for the 20-foot front yard setback renders the existing structure non-conforming. The garage entry encroaches fully into the front setback and into the public right-of-way. This encroachment is allowed pursuant to Special Encroachment Permit number SPE089. That was recorded in 2010. A second encroachment permit, number 091, for the retaining wall in the right-of-way was recorded in 2011. And the proposed addition is in conformance with all zoning requirements. This is the existing site as seen from Olive Street. There's also -- you can't really see it, I apologize. But in the corner of the property -- my pointer is not working. In the northeast corner of the property, there is also an existing easement that was recorded because there was a lot line adjustment because this house was built in 1956 straddling the property line. So there was the lot line adjustment and the subsequent easement for access to the property to the east. The site plan shows the area of the proposed addition. It's outlined in red -- or no, it's -- pardon me. It's outlined in green. The non-conforming garage is outlined in purple, and you can see that red line shows the 20-foot setback showing the addition outside of the 20-foot setback. The applicant proposes to add 550-square-foot addition, shown outlined in black in the image to the right. There's a 35-square-foot balcony, and it's -- the existing residence is 2,212 odd square feet. Oops. The balcony extension provides for architectural articulation along the front elevation consistent with the adopted design guidelines and is allowed to encroach into the front setback pursuant to Section 1748-120 of the zoning ordinance. And it's staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission approve the requested conditional use permit UP0433 for the proposed addition by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 02-16, subject to the findings and conditions of approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions for Joan?
Did you -- you didn't receive any comments. I mean, I've got one citizen email, and that's it. That's the only comment that was received?
Yes, sir.
On the -- you mentioned that there's conditional permits in 2010?
2010 and 11. There were two -- there was the lot line adjustment. I believe first were the special encroachment permits, and then the lot line adjustment.
Okay. And that just had to do because of the 1956?
Yeah. You can see the line, the existing home. If you were to take this -- sorry, my pointer isn't -- oh, there it is. That line kind of went straight over to the edge, to the corner there.
Oh, okay.
So the house was built across the property line.
Oh, okay.
And so when they did the lot line adjustment, all of the setbacks on the side are conforming.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Clarify for me on this. There's on the site plan sheet, A100, the bold black line, is that the wall line or is that the roof line? Because it's actually -- what I'm reading as the wall line is actually sitting in the front setback by, you know, on the little right-hand corner there. Kind of the 20-foot setback line, you know, crosses over there. So it's hard for me to tell on these plans whether that was the eve line or whether that was the wall line.
Sorry, I kind of went over it. I kind of went over it with that red line. You can't really see it there. The eve does go into the front setback, which is allowed, but the edge of the building is at that 20-foot line.
Okay, so...
So what Commissioner Luer is asking about, I think, is the wall.
Is -- so is the wall from of that, the intended addition? It looks like it crosses over into that front setback line.
So when you're looking at the site plan on Sheet A100, you'll see the dashed line?
Right.
That's the footprint of the home, so outside of the setback. The sort of dark line that's outlined beyond that is eve and covered patio.
Okay. Okay, so that is --
That's one of the things.
That line that's showing over into the setback is the line for the roof eve?
Correct.
Okay. It was hard for me to tell from these plans.
I had the same issue when I reviewed it earlier.
Okay, this is the time we open for public comment, and I do see one person out there, but not on this item. So seeing none, we are going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Who would like to start off?
Well, I like the existing house, and I like small additions on existing footprints. But to be quite honest, the -- what's been given us, to me, is totally unsatisfactory to make a decision. This is a hillside site, a steep hillside site that you approach from downhill, and they've taken the corner and actually built it up substantially and then cantilevered a deck off of it. And so the three-dimensional representation that's in here is as if you are Casper the Ghost about 30 feet above the ground. So I don't think there's any information here that the public would have seen to give any kind of idea what this -- what the impact of this corner addition is to the streetscape. Because when I look it up on Google Earth image and see what the streetscape looks like, this really scares me because the -- there's kind of a compression. What I like about it is they kept the bulk of the addition back at the 20-foot line. But vertically, when you're looking up the street, it's compressed tremendously. And the adjacent homeowner is really back there, far, much farther than this one is in terms of setback. So I'm surprised there wasn't concern on that person's part because they're filling in the corner of the lot. So I'd actually like to see another image myself. That's the one thing I'd say because I don't get a good sense of it from this.
I similarly have a similar concern, but it was more like, you know, we have these guidelines, and we go by -- I look at this house. If this house, without the addition, we would have -- if we're looking at it, like, let's just, for fun, look as if the house exists, we were to review it as if it was going to be built today. We would be, I would assume, we would say, nice articulation, open air. It has nice features. However, with this addition, and I actually walked, you know, walked there, I would really like to see the three-dimensional, you know, the color, where you get pictures that superimpose of what the addition is. Because I sense that this is going to kind of gear into the mansionization kind of like bulk and scale issue, just with the way the topography is and that addition. It's a concern, but I would like to have as well a little more visual of what would happen, you know, the way it's going to look.
Commissioner.
You know, they did just complete the box on it. And, you know, they probably could have done -- they probably could have done better. But it does -- I don't know if it -- it's hard to say that it rises to the level of denial for me. So I'm going to listen to a little more discussion.
I found it really difficult to envision what it would look like completed, even looking at the plans, and I did do a site visit today. I understand what Commissioner Lucas is saying, that it is coming up, if you're coming up the street, Olive, like from the golf course area, it will be a huge impact on that corner. Coming down, it won't be as much because you, if you're coming down Olive towards it because it is on the far side. However, I'm fairly ambivalent about it. I can't quite imagine what it's going to look like, but you're right, it does kind of, you know, complete the box, and it really doesn't infringe on anything else. I mean, we still have the same setbacks, et cetera. However, I just think it's going to be large. It's going to look large and bulky.
Was there any communication from the owner as to why they aren't here or have a representative here?
No, we didn't have -- I was -- I just actually asked that when we opened it up, why they weren't here. We did have several conversations with him about it. So, you know, you have the cross-section drawn that you see down there on the bottom that steps it back from that garage, which is that piece in the lower portion of it. It's filling in, you know, I guess what would be a notch in the house and bringing it out to that level. So what is the -- I'll be honest with you, I'm not really getting what you want to see. So if you could give us a little more detail about that, what's your -- well, I mean, yeah, you can look at that, and then you can see that this is carrying the roof line over, the face of the building's being carried over. So you can extrapolate that just kind of by looking at it. I mean, I think from a bulk and scale standpoint, you're saying you want it, the three-dimensional drawing from the street level looking up at it both sides? Is that what you want? I mean, we can -- I'm sure we can make that happen.
I guess, to me, that this is the second time we've had a hillside site the last, maybe, two months, maybe three months. We had another one on the other side of Cerito Peak a few months ago where we had a significant grade change in the way that you -- and we passed that one because I think we all thought it was a really cool design. It was one of the nicer projects, I think, we've seen in a while here. And that one struck me that it was really hard to identify what the massing was like. And they didn't have a solid three-dimensional insertion. And these things are not that hard to do. That's what makes me crazy about it, is it's -- the way projects are done, they can do these things. And we've even had people do hand-drawn ones. We had one that was analog done on one of the properties right behind the beach, one of the beach areas.
Yeah.
Yeah. That was another beautiful project. But they did the eye-level elevation perspective by hand, and it was really helpful. So I'm not against the house. I just, maybe it's more incumbent to staff, when we have something that has this kind of -- I don't buy that disembodied view to try to sell the project. I want to see them do something from an eye-level kind of understanding. And most of these designers would be smart enough to know where the biggest problem is they have to convince us to solve. And this one is, it's, I don't know, by the time we're out of that next lot, we're down another eight or nine feet. You know, so the corner, the lowest spot of that garage is about nine feet above the adjacent lot at the driveway point. Yeah, there. That's -- there's a lot of drop in there. So that's the one I want to see, what it looks like. The one on the right doesn't concern me so much, the one on the left. And again, it's a modest square -- it's 500 square feet, and it's a funky '50s house. And it's a funky '50s addition. And it's got a beautiful contrasting bottom level. I mean, I don't want to talk architecture, but what he's doing down here and what he's doing up here look really cool together. So I think there's some interesting things. It's a very idiosyncratic house. I just don't feel, I really understand the impact of the corner. And I think this is one, when you see it constructed, it's going to be, wow, it's a lot bigger than we thought it was.
So you -- so the image on the left is really kind of the perspective you're looking?
Yeah.
Okay. That's perfect. I can take, I can deal with that.
Yeah.
So that's good. I wasn't totally tracking the beginning.
I may be, I may like it. I may like it a lot.
I mean, that's fair. I mean, I think that's, I can give that direction specific. I don't know. I mean, that's great. Thank you.
And Scott, I think that this had been brought up when we did the other one, which was on the corner. So maybe in the future, you can make sure that the applicant has those perspectives for us.
Sure. I'll be honest, I saw this, I didn't think it was that big of a deal.
Yeah.
I looked at it, I was like, I kind of figured what it was going to look like. It was a small addition. And it was stepped back significantly from that lower garage face. And I said, so you get this sort of depth as a result of it? And I was like, that's kind of stepping back up, and then you have another kind of level up behind it as it steps up the hillside. I was kind of like, ah, it's stepping back and up the hill and into, kind of into the hill a little bit, although put out.
But that's why you do perspectives from the street. Because if you, if I asked the average person on the street, if you go back to that one, how far is that face away from the front of the garage? You know, you'd say it's, I don't know, eight feet? 20 feet? No. You'd never think it's 20 feet back there. So everything's kind of foreshortened because of the verticality of the site. That's my only concern. It's a perspective.
It looks terrible in two dimensions when you look at it. I mean, you look at that thing.
That's why we don't design in two dimensions.
Yeah, exactly. So, all right. I think that's good direction if the commission, you know, all agrees with that. You know, I mean, I think that's something we can get.
Getting nods here.
And, I mean, I don't think that's a whole lot of headache on the part of the applicant.
I mean, it's liable to be fine. I just want the discipline of -- these are fairly large homes. This is another neighborhood that I'm surprised we don't have people in here. And maybe everybody loves this. I don't know. I'd just like them to have the benefit of seeing something that was more visually, experientially, what they're going to have built there rather than that other, which is a fine perspective, don't get me wrong, but it's just not one that helps sell the vertical issue very well.
Yeah, it kind of has you at the level of it standing 20 feet above the street.
It's Dr. Teff's plane attempting to land.
That's right. Yeah, that's good.
So do we have consensus on this?
Do we have to make a motion to continue?
You have to make a motion to continue, yes.
Do we have an idea what, date uncertain?
It's going to probably, it's going to have to be date uncertain because there's probably zero chance they're going to have it ready for the next meeting since staff reports it will be due right away. But it's probably possible that it'll be on the following meeting after that. I mean, we'll try to get it on as soon as we can, as soon as they're ready.
They're not going to be building this next couple of weeks, anyway.
There's not going to be what?
They're not going to be building anything these next two weeks. It's too wet.
Is the commission supportive of continuing it, or is there a feeling that we should take the vote now?
I'd support a continue. You know, like I said, I can visualize what it's going to be. They just completed the box. It's, you know, but it's a really poor graphical representation of what it should be. You know, so, you know, I concur that, you know, that all our adoring public out there should be able to see what it's going to, what it's going to be. So I guess I'll make a motion for Commissioner Lucas.
No, I'll move we continue to a date uncertain.
I'll second.
I think we would need a roll call, then.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Sadowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Luer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Sorry for the delay. I'm moving a little slowly tonight. Bad back. So moving on to Agenda Item B3. This is an amendment to the local coastal program and zoning text amendment A00-029. And I believe that Whitney is going to give us the lowdown.
Good evening, commissioners. Let me make an adjustment here. Okay, so in May of 2014, I can't believe it was that long ago, the city council adopted Ordinance 585, which was intended to amend zoning ordinance standards for secondary dwelling units and guest houses. That ordinance is included as Attachment B to your staff report. The ordinance has not yet been submitted to the California Coastal Commission for certification. Rather than doing so, staff recommends further review and refinement of the amendment language in order to accomplish a number of things which are listed in the staff report, including addressing the issue of using secondary dwelling units as vacation rentals, clarifying the permitting process, correcting some minor grammatical errors, and more clearly specifying development standards. Staff's proposed changes are shown as Exhibit A of the resolution attached to your staff report, which is Attachment A. The changes are shown in strike-through format, amending the last ordinance on this subject, which was actually certified by the coastal commission. That was in 1997. Since then, three separate ordinances have been adopted by various city councils regarding secondary dwelling units, the most recent being the one from May in 2014, Ordinance 585. Staff's proposed changes, together with any further revisions recommended by your commission, would become part of a new ordinance for city council consideration and then be submitted to coastal commission for certification. Just to keep it short, the staff report also lists some other potential changes that I didn't discuss in full in the report, but I do have language available if you're interested in considering them, including such things as minimum unit size, owner occupancy, for instance. So just to reiterate, staff is recommending that the planning commission forward a recommendation for approval to city council for amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding secondary dwelling units and guest houses as shown in the Exhibit A attached to your resolution, of course, with any modifications you would like to make. And let the modifications begin. I'll be happy to answer questions, offer language, and you have 15 minutes. Just kidding.
Okay. Well, I don't suppose there's a possibility of ex parte communication on this one, so we'll move right on to questions for staff.
I guess the biggest thing that struck me when I looked at this was the idea of the vacation rental and then the homeowner occupancy. And what I was thinking is, I don't want to, I wouldn't advocate seeing happen, is we have a rental home with a rental granny unit. It's a, you know, two vacation rentals. I don't think that's, that wasn't the goal of the -- and it was, was it a federal or state law that required the residential capacity to have secondary units?
It's a California state law that we're trying to follow.
State law. So we have to allow secondary units in the residential zones by mandate?
Well, yes. And we have some discretion as to standards that we might establish, and those are outlined in the state law, too, which is attached as Exhibit, I mean, Attachment C to your staff report, yeah.
Yeah, and then the size, I think, is important, too, because it's hard to envision sometimes, I think, when someone is purchasing a home, and then you start to think, what are all the things that could happen around me? And the ambiguity of how big the secondary home could be, I think, is really a big one. And 1,200 square feet is a big house. So I would, especially, you've got the condition in there about administrative...
Coastal development permit.
Yeah, and there's something to me about, I think, did we have at 1.900, and if it was above 900, you had to go to the planning commission?
That was in Ordinance 585, and yes. And that's still basically recommended. I mean, a lot of the language from the Ordinance 585 was kept, and then some things were sort of condensed and a few things were added.
Yeah, like I say, I don't have any firm opinion about those things, other than I think it's reasonable to assume nobody would see a large secondary unit appear without some kind of notice and ability to discuss it. A small one, I think, you'd make the assumption something small could appear. So if it's 800, 900 square feet, something like that, I think, is reasonable to put in as a cap. But above that, I would think we want to have some process. I would advocate we have some process that's more formal for the review. Because we may have some large lots that it may be fine, but in general, I would say it's, that's a lot of square footage. And then the, like I said, the thing that struck me is the vacation rentals in and of themselves doesn't strike me as bad, but the vacation rental without homeowner occupancy. I think there's something about this may actually have been built for an older parent or, you know, family member that maybe that member passes or another condition shows up that you've got this unit. Well, I need to have some income off of it. And long-term, short-term, I'm much more open to what my colleagues would say about that. But I think if it is our vacation rental, it has to be linked to homeowner occupancy of the main unit. That's pretty much the gist of what my thoughts were when I ran through them.
Would you like to hear the text that she would propose with regard to ownership?
Yeah.
With regard to homeowner occupancy?
Right.
Okay. This is my music while I look for my text, which I know I have in here somewhere, probably near the beginning. Okay. Property owners must occupy either the primary single-family dwelling unit or the secondary dwelling unit as a principal place of residence. That's some simple text, and I can look at other, I have other examples from different jurisdictions, too.
It's simple, fairly common, and similar to what I have in Austin-Frisco.
I would just point out that this is a public hearing item. So if we could stick to questions for staff at this point, and then we'll let the public speak if they wish to, and then we'll come back for comments.
So my question is, so you wouldn't have the ability to rent out the, like, the major home and then have a rent out, I'm talking short-term or long-term rental, I'm not talking vacation, I'm talking, you know. So you couldn't have renters both in the primary residence and the secondary residence? You would have to have an owner occupied in one?
That's the way a number of secondary dwelling unit ordinances read, that the property owner occupies one or the other. In a... In a previous iteration, I think it was that, I forget which ordinance number, 505 maybe, there's some language, and I can hunt that down for you too, where in Morro Bay, they sort of allowed if the owner wasn't occupying, then both had to be rented together, or something to that effect, which purpose I wasn't real sure about, but...
So, let's, let's say somebody has, you know, builds a grand, builds a secondary unit for their daughter, you know, grandmother, make it a true granny unit, and then, you know, situations change, and they have to move out of town for, for a job, or, you know, something.
Or they die.
Or they die, well, no, they're still around, because...
They're running it.
They're, they're not, what are they supposed to do with their house? Leave it vacant? I mean, they're not able to rent out? You know, if they're, if they have to occupy one unit or the other, they're, we're essentially tying them to the land, or they've got to sell their house. That doesn't seem really fair to me, but...
Well, again, guys, let's stick with questions for staff.
So that's a question, so, am I interpreting that correctly?
Generally, yeah, and I understand your question, and I will look for that sort of language that seemed to address that particular scenario.
Yeah, seems like we could get into major lawsuits.
Well, no, that's actually common language that you find in many of the ordinances, I don't think that's an issue, but I think what Whitney was referring to was, you know, a companion language that says, if you had that situation, that you would rent both of them out together, or, remember, the idea behind this is, one, that it's addressing an aging population, and providing different options for housing types, and it's providing affordable housing. Those are the two reasons why this legislation was passed, and so we should be keeping that in mind when we're framing and putting together our ordinance, is that it's supposed to provide different opportunities for different types of housing, one, and two, it's supposed to provide some type of affordable housing potentially, which is one of the reasons we got into the, hey, maybe we shouldn't have vacation rentals in this, because a vacation rental's not an affordable housing unit, it's not a residential housing unit, it doesn't really meet any of the intent that was behind the passage of the legislation. And our housing, you know, is probably somewhat contradictory to our housing element, to have a vacation rental.
Other questions? I, I have a few questions. I may have been hanging out with lawyers too much lately.
That's good.
One question I had was, there's a section in there that requires the, I think it's 320B, that requires the secondary unit to meet all of the development standards of the zone in which it's established, and the question, for, for purposes of meeting those development standards, would a secondary dwelling unit be considered an accessory building, or would it be considered another primary building on the lot?
Well, it's kind of its own animal. I mean, it's, it's not an accessory building like a shed, or something like that, it's a secondary dwelling unit, so it's, it's a residential unit, like, where exactly are you going with this question?
Well, we, okay.
Because we have our access...
If you have two primary buildings on a lot, okay, the separation between the buildings has to be 10 feet.
That's correct.
The separation between a primary building and an accessory building only has to be six feet, so I guess the question is, which standard would we apply?
We would probably apply the 10-foot standard, that's what's traditionally been applied, and, and that kind of follows the, the building regulations, so if it's an occupied, like, residence, it's considered, from the building standpoint, primary and subject to that 10-foot separation.
Okay, that's, and then, the second question I had was, the, the current zoning ordinance, I just happened to notice this, prohibits guest houses in the S2B overlay, the residential S2B overlay zone. Would that provision be deleted from the current zoning ordinance? Because it would kind of conflict with the zoning where they're allowed, according to this.
It wouldn't need to be deleted. It's interesting that we've chosen to combine addressing secondary dwelling units and guest house, guest houses here in Morro Bay. They're, they're kind, they're different. The, there's no state law affecting guest houses, except for that, the, the one that affects secondary dwelling units states that there should only be one or the other on a lot, so we're, we've, we've built that in, otherwise...
Yeah, I was just noticing that there's an apparent inconsistency between this and that portion of the zoning ordinance that would maybe, perhaps need to be resolved.
Okay.
And then, the, the ordinance says that, with regard to parking, that the, the primary residence has to be, can't be non-conforming with regard to parking, it has to be inconformity.
That's pretty standard language, too, just...
And the, the one thing that, that was unclear to me was, if constructing the secondary dwelling made a residence which was conforming with regard to parking non-conforming, would that also be prohibited by that, by that section?
Yes, and I'm not sure how that scenario would work, would they construct the secondary dwelling unit in the driveway or something? What are you, what are you envisioning?
No, let's say you had, let's say you had a two-car garage, and you wanted the, your tenants to park in the driveway of that, but you can't have tandem parking between the primary residence and the secondary residence, so you just say, okay, one of the spaces in the driveway is now tenant parking, and therefore, it's not in tandem with the primary, but then you don't have two covered spaces for the primary residence.
You have been hanging out with lawyers.
You know, it's, you just gotta, you look at every weird thing that could go wrong.
But we, we allow, actually, tandem parking is, is an allowable configuration for primary dwelling units, subject to your approval.
But they have to be covered and enclosed. And this would, this would leave one of them not covered and enclosed, you see what I'm saying, would, you know, it could, there could be language put in that would fix that.
Well, I don't know, I'm not sure that there is an issue, were you, can you, were you stating that if you had the garage, because that's the required parking, you don't get to put it someplace else without a parking exception, so you wouldn't be able to put the secondary unit in the driveway behind a garage space?
No, no, the parking for the secondary unit would be in the driveway, but that couldn't happen, because you're not allowed to have tandem parking between the primary unit and the secondary unit, so you just say, ah, no, one of the spaces in the garage is now for the secondary unit, and the other parking space for the secondary unit is behind that, and we have tandem parking for, you know, so it was conforming when they put in the application, but building the second unit makes it non-conforming with regard to...
Well, that would actually make the existing house non-conforming, it would require a parking exception, so we wouldn't allow it.
So that would, that would be prohibited.
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to do it, because as soon as you take that, as soon as you have those, those are your required spaces, and they're supposed to be covered, so in the garage, and you say, oh, that's, one of these is now going to be the secondary unit one, well, that means the second parking space is going to have to move outside of the garage for the primary unit, which is not conforming.
Right.
So they'd have to get a parking exception for that.
Okay, so maybe we could just, we can add some language to make that clear, maybe.
Well, can I just add a really quick question? So you're basically saying prohibit tandem parking if it blocks one of the required two covered and enclosed spaces for the primary unit?
Well, you could just say, you could just say, the, the primary residence has to be conforming and must remain conforming after construction of the secondary unit, or something, you know, just to make it crystal clear to everybody.
Okay, though we do allow for parking exceptions, and so, it wouldn't necess, I see what you're saying, so you're not, are you, I mean, would you be open to allowing for a parking exception to accommodate a secondary dwelling, such that the primary residence would be, have a garage space and a tandem space?
Well, they can, they can, people can ask for a parking exception for any reason, so, I mean, that, they should be able to, in that case, also, but if they get an exception, then they'd be conforming still, right?
Right. And, and in this case, it sort of ups the ante, it's, so it's a conditional use permit that would, would be required to be approved in order to allow that configuration?
Works for me.
Okay.
Okay, that's all the questions that I have, and I apologize for getting into the minutia. Did you?
On page 3, Whitney, it says to clarify the water meter requirements.
Right.
Okay. Is there a requirement, do you just, okay, you have a lot, our one lot has one lateral, okay, one sewer lateral, so you're gonna just tie in, is there any, do you, let me put it this way, there was a house that I was involved with in Cayucus, and we had to put in a second, for the granny unit, a granny unit needed a second lateral, is there provisions to be able to do that?
Are you talking sewer lateral, or what? Okay. So, multiple units can share a sewer lateral, but if multiple units are separated, so you have a, a primary dwelling, it could be, it could be multifamily or with a secondary dwelling, where you have two separate structures, you know, the 10-foot separation, two separate roofs, they get, they each are required to have a water line and water meter, but they could still potentially share a sewer line.
Okay, okay. Is there a provision to add a sewer for a granny unit, or is that, or is that gonna go through the, is that, I guess that might have to go to coastal, right? Because you're expanding the sewer service? No?
No, you're not, it's the same service. In fact, you know, how all this came about for the secondary units is, we're required, we can't treat them as something different than a primary unit, they're the same thing, they're all one house, basically, is the way we're supposed to treat them.
Okay.
So, so it's not adding any additional service versus what's there, so you could, if they wanted to have the separate service, like, for some, probably environmental reason, because I don't know why you'd want to have the, the second lateral necessarily, unless you're just, when maybe you had issues or something, I don't know, but you could, it just, probably, you wouldn't see that very often.
Okay.
If you're on a hillside, and the lateral gets clogged, the downstairs house has a problem.
Yeah, that's why they have backflow devices, but, you know, Richard, you know, typically, you could run, like, 10 bathrooms on a four-inch, four-inch line, you know, so it's, the plumbing units, you can do a bunch of bathroom, a bunch of fixtures on a four-inch line. But I would think we'd need to get back to the vacation rental, to what's actually in the, the unit. So, does it, would this, would the prohibition on vacation rentals also be a prohibition on Airbnb and short-term rentals?
I don't have an answer on that, because our ordinance doesn't address it. Our ordinance doesn't currently address it, and, because this is an ever-changing issue out there, you know, and it's been gone through the court system a couple of, several different times recently, I'm not sure exactly where all that stands, if you don't have an ordinance that addresses it, although, we're going to be making a change through a resolution coming up here very quickly, at the city council level, to make our zoning permissive, at which point, if it doesn't say you can do it, you can't do it, so, and that has to do with the, the change in laws related to medical marijuana. And that's really just to preserve the city's ability to regulate this moving forward. I mean, at some point, we'll probably come back with an ordinance that deals with some of these things, but I think the city kind of wants to see how things shake out, not only now, but moving into the 2016 November election, because there are going to be probably at least a couple of bills that, that suggest that recreational marijuana be allowed in the state of California. So, anyway, but so our, so the way our zoning is dealt with is going to change a little bit, coming up here pretty soon, I think.
So, technically, then, we're not going to allow, you know, Airbnb rentals for the granny units or for the main house?
That would be correct at this point.
So, the way it states here, I think it states it as, you know, secondary dwelling units should not be rented as vacation rentals, but you could then rent the main house.
And so that's the question for discussion, is do you want them both to be that way? And, so, example, in Pismo, we prohibited them for both. The discussion that took place on this is, well, should you be limiting the rights for vacation rentals for, for one of these, if any, if any other person, like in Morro Bay, we have no restriction, you can have a vacation rental in any zone, basically, and so the question then becomes, should we be limiting that or not? We at least applied it to the secondary dwelling unit, because that's supposed to be the thing you're providing for affordability and that other option for housing, and so we put the prohibition on that, and then kept the other piece of it for a discussion topic, please correct me if I'm butchering this, Whitney, but we put the other portion, other piece of that for discussion, to see where the commission was at on it, because we do allow vacation rentals in all zones, and we don't, and I think you were all kind of surprised when I told you we had a, only had 163 of these a couple of meetings ago, right? Yeah, everybody thought it was a big deal, and then you find that out, and you're like, oh, well, maybe it's not as big of a deal as it might otherwise, might otherwise have thought, so, again, it's open for discussion, so discuss.
Yeah, I, that reminds me of, in Cayucus, they had these EDU, EDU units, all that doesn't mean nothing when you've got the flow coming out from a lift station, and I could, I was at the holidays at my son-in-law's, and on his block, there was literally 60% of the homes are vacation rentals, and so, what I feel is that the citizens, you say you have 130, whatever, 137, I know that the flows quadruple, there's times that, like, they'll go triple, you know, during, like, polar bear dip.
Well, that's second, that's secondary house, there's, there's second houses in this, I mean, you know, there's probably 25% of our housing stocks.
We are, we are inevitably being seduced into discussion here, so let me at least, let me at least open the meeting for public comment, is there, if there's anyone here who would like to comment on this topic, please step forward, take the microphone, give us your name, and we'd love to hear from you. Seeing none, we will close public discussion, we will close public comment, bring it back to the commission for discussion, have at it.
Let me, can I, point of order, I guess, are we going to discuss these items, are we going to discuss it like, well, item by item, or are we going to discuss this free-for-all, tag-team, no holes barred?
We could, we could, we could maybe go section by section, rather than item by item, just for, for, for the efficient, for the sake of getting some sleep tonight.
Yeah, I could, I could see, you know, doing the proposed language, and then doing the proposed topics.
The optional topics, that's, 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 sounds very reasonable, because I would, I do think that we need some more information on some of these options, so, why don't we, why don't we just take Exhibit A, okay, and start with Chapter 1712, are there any comments or issues there?
Let me get to there.
It's definitions.
Yeah, no.
That's what I'm making, is this where we would put language about, I mean, the one thing that struck me, that I didn't think about when I read through the first time, is that we have several references to additions, and so the idea that it's a separate structure is just one option, it could be an addition, and then once it's an addition, does it, by building code, then get treated like a duplex with fire separations and things like that, or is it just happens to be a separate, enclosed, or divisible entity within the single structure, that we're not treating it as...
We treat, we treat it as this, the holistic same unit when they're attached, so there's no, there's not the fire separation requirement that you might otherwise have for a, you know, for a, like, duplex.
I guess the only reason I'm asking, it, it doesn't necessarily have to do with this, but in theory, the duplex idea was, you have two separate entities occupying an attached dwelling, that the fire separations and things are there to protect the property and the lives that are there, so if by default, what starts as, you know, a secondary unit for a close family member... So if by default, what starts as, you know, a secondary unit for a close family member ends up being two vacation rentals, it's basically the same calamity hazard situation as a duplex unit, except you don't have the benefit of fire separations and things like that. So there's kind of a building code definition, you know, what this turns into Generation Three. Generation One, yeah, it's for your daughter, it's for grandma. Generation Two is, okay, we're gonna rent that out to somebody, some student from Paola requested. Generation Three is, they're both vacation rentals, you know. So that's all I'm concerned about, because if you start to introduce multiple entities into, into a community, I don't know if the fire risk becomes higher, if there's an insurance risk in an area because of that type of thing. But to me, it fundamentally goes back to a building code thing. To me, there's kind of a foundational thing there about, if I'm buying whatever house here in town, our cheapest houses are still amazing amounts of money. I'm putting this massive investment in here, and then the person next to me has two units there, but there's no fire separations that would be in a duplex unit, that's potentially a hazard to my investment. Now, I don't know how that gets reflected if the insurance companies rate a town out of capacity, you know, they do, they look at things like, where's the fire stations? How far away? Or, you know, I don't know if they look at things like, do they have a non-separation, you know, granny unit ordinance? I don't know.
I've never, I've never raised.
I'm getting out in Dr. Teff's lawyer stratosphere here, but that concerns me, because that is a tangible aspect of, of investment and then risk associated with people building, really filling out the footprint of a buildable lot with, with, with basically is a duplex that doesn't have the building code capacity for fire separations.
That may be why a number of ordinances that address secondary dwelling units have both an occupancy requirement and a deed restriction to at least track that somehow or notify prospective buyers, et cetera.
I'm curious, we have a definition for a secondary dwelling unit. We don't have a definition for guest house. It just seems that symmetrically, there should be.
We do, we do have a definition for guest house in our zoning ordinance that we weren't proposing to change, which I'm happy to read to you.
Please.
Do, 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 this is my music again. Okay, 1712-315. Guest house means any attached or detached accessory building, so there's that word accessory building, which does not have enclosed access directly to the interior of the principal residence, which has any bathroom facility, this is kind of, and which does not contain kitchen cooking facilities or food preparation or food storage facilities, and where no compensation in any form is received or paid for, for the use thereof. That's kind of wild, right?
So if you have a bathroom in your garage, you have a guest house?
Okay, we could do a better guest house definition.
Well, I don't know that there's anything actually wrong with it. I mean, it just, it just says you can't have cooking and food preparation facilities in it, which is how it's differentiated from a secondary unit. I don't think it's all that bad. I think that's the important differentiation between the two. It's basically an extra bedroom that you have that's, you know, got a bathroom in it, you know, for lack of a better.
Yeah. But I mean, number one, we should get rid of the accessory building thing if we're considering, and number two, it, maybe I missed it, but it, it should be, it should indicate that it's habitable space. That would eliminate the garage with the bathroom from being part of the definition. And.
You're, you're mixing zoning codes and building codes now, which we've do, we're big fans of that here. I'm not a big fan. When we redo the zoning code, we're pulling all the references to the building code out of it, because the building code changes over time. It's a bad habit. Habitable space is a building code definition that has been tweaked over the years. I'm not really too interested in touching that.
You could use intended to be occupied by people or something like that. I mean.
So there's, there's actually building code requirements that those things fall underneath. So they, you know, for, for guest houses, they have to have heat, they, you know, so they would already, by definition in the building code, it's already dealt with in the building code. So once we call it this, and somebody comes in and wants a building permit for it, it has to comply with the building code requirements that go along with it. Correct. Well, there's requirements that go along with it, yes.
Scott? Oh, I'm sorry.
Back on to the guest house. When you were reading that, what did they say about, did it have to have a separate entrance?
Which does not have enclosed access directly to the interior of the principal residence. So that would imply it does have its separate entrance. And that's, and that's a consideration that I've seen in different ordinances, even relating to secondary dwellings as well.
So if you have a, essentially, if you have a room with a bathroom that is not internally connected to the house, whether that's a bedroom, a, you know, an exercise room, or any other habitable space, it is then falls under the definition of a guest house?
We would, you get permits to reflect that.
And you would need a second, you would need a third parking space for that? Is there a parking space requirement for, for a guest house?
I don't think so. I mean, I'll have to check that for sure.
Not in here, not in this, maybe somewhere, somewhere else.
Thought there was a requirement on that.
All it says for guest houses in our parking section is greater parking may be required for guest houses.
So if you, if there's no plans for renting that out, it's just a exercise room with a bathroom? Is that, but it has, it's separated from the primary residence, so by definition, that's a guest house?
And it can't be rented out.
But.
According to the definition. While we're.
I mean, I can certainly research other guest house definitions.
It seems like the key thing is the guest house doesn't have a kitchen.
Yes.
That is the key thing.
And so then it's a matter of, are these secondary units capable of being called, is the secondary unit an umbrella that includes a secondary dwelling and a guest house? Or is guest house a separate category that doesn't fall under the secondary unit?
It's a separate category. And, and we're recommending that a property have one or the other, if, if either, but not both.
Okay. And it, just, just, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, the, the attachment A, page two at the top, has the guest house restrictions in it. They're just reflect, they'd go back into and pick up those, that definition, and say a guest house shall not contain more than 640 square feet of habitable, so habitable floor area containing not more than one bedroom and bathroom, nor shall it exceed 30% of the floor area of the main residence. And no cooking or food preparation or food storage facilities shall be provided. So we have it kind of twice.
That's basically the definition.
It is, yeah. As soon as I was reading it, I was like, we have it twice.
Okay, so another, a corollary question, and this is something I honestly don't understand. What is the distinction between guest houses slash quarters and habitable, habitable structures for accessory living area? The top of page, the top of the second page, 1718-315.
Oh, and accessory living areas, you mean?
Habitable structures for accessory living area.
Where are we at?
That's on.
The second page of the attachment of Exhibit A.
Okay. Do we really need the words between quarters and area?
We don't absolutely have to have that. That's just kind of the way it's been laid out in our zoning ordinance and wasn't proposed to be changed, but we could definitely shorten that.
Just call it guest houses.
Yeah, just, just change it to guest house. I mean, I just hate having a bunch of terms in there that nobody knows exactly what they mean.
I found that kind of awkward, too. I agree.
I mean, we just, yeah, you can just say guest houses may be permitted. Okay. If we're done with definitions, we could go to 1724 Primary Districts?
I'm about to go.
Oh, back to definitions?
Just real quickly. If we're going to strike it on the second line in the paragraph, we should also strike it up in the, the title of 17.48.315. It's also in the title.
It's in B, too.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, we'll go through and clean those out.
Thank you.
Right. So in terms of the primary, I just would reiterate that we need to figure out what to do with the S2B overlay, and whether that needs to be, it's, I think the S2B overlay is only that tiny little area up in North Point, so it's, none of those lots have room for a secondary unit anyway, but.
Oh, that might have been, I just suggest that if that's correct, that might have been part of that whole tract approval. Is that where we're talking about?
It's in the zoning ordinance. It's in the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, but I, you, you might be right. We probably shouldn't, well, it's a prohibition in there, so.
Right.
Just that you can't have it, so.
Well, actually, it's, yeah, you just, if it's appropriate, and you guys can research it, we just need to say, you know, in the, these districts other than the S2B overlay, you know, just, just so we don't have things working against the law. So.
Okay, I will research that. Thank you.
Moving on to 1748-315, we've made some changes already, but do we have other thoughts on that?
Are those locations, if, if guest house is a secondary unit, it's got to map the same way all secondary units map with relative to residential districts, right? So we get our laundry list of zones there. Are they mirroring the ones that we had in the primary districts?
The location for, are you asking the difference between the location for guest houses versus secondary dwelling units? They're not exactly the same.
Do you know which one isn't the same?
For instance, in the CRR zone, which is essentially the cloisters, that whole tract in coastal development permit was approved prohibiting secondary dwelling units based on traffic impacts, which is allowable under state law, and changing that would require an amendment to their coastal development permit. So given the range of other residential areas that we have available for secondary dwelling units, it seemed prudent to just let that prohibition stay in place.
So if I'm interpreting this correctly, this C, one guest house or a second unit is permitted, although we, since we're only talking about guest houses, we don't need or second unit in there, but is permitted per one primary single-family dwelling. So in other words, if you have a lot with a multi, with a duplex on it, say, then you could not put a second unit on that lot. Is that correct?
That is correct. And we do want to leave, that's a second unit, but it really should read secondary dwelling unit. We were still recommending that there be either one or the other on a piece of property.
Oh, I see.
Either, either a guest house or a secondary dwelling unit. So that's why that or second unit is in there, but.
But it's under the heading of guest houses, so.
So that's just a, and you'll see under the heading for secondary dwellings, the same thing sort of reiterated.
But you know, if, honestly, if we're confused, you know, and maybe it would be clearer to say only one guest house is permitted per one primary single-family dwelling on the same lot. A guest house and a, and a secondary dwelling unit may not be constructed on the same lot, something like that. You know, I mean, just because.
Okay.
Just to make it idiot-proof. One, one, one other issue I had.
Sections, though.
Yes.
One other question I had about this section is under the next section, under secondary dwelling units, we require that the secondary dwelling units comply with all development standards, and then we have the design thing saying it should be consistent and/or reasonably compatible. I feel like we ought to have those same requirements for a guest house.
We can do that.
And I would, I would personally remove the word reasonably from the design section.
And that was added in 585, so we can, we can remove that.
It doesn't mean anything. It's, you know, it's either consistent or it's inconsistent.
So let me just be clear, you're thinking to have the design section and the development standard section apply also under guest houses?
Repeated under guest houses, yeah. Just make it D and E.
Yep. Whitney, I was thinking that if they're gonna mirror each other with, you know, because you're gonna have either or, that we may want to keep it a little cleaner and have 17.48-315 just about guest houses and have all of the different things for design, for location, for size under that, and then the secondary unit be very clear that it's only for secondary units, so that you would look at one section for guest houses and one section for secondary units, and then you, but up in the front, at top, you can say, you know, it's one or the other, but that way you just go to the correct section, because it seems like you're talking about similar things, but sometimes it's not in guest houses, and sometimes it's in secondary units. So if we could just mirror them both, I think that would work better.
That's, yeah, that was kind of what I was.
Yeah.
Getting towards, yeah. Unless, unless you feel that.
They are, oh, excuse me, they are two separate sections, so I like where you're going with this, to, you know, where the, where the standards are similar and it makes sense for them to apply, and all I'm interested in building is a guest house, then I'm gonna read those standards, you know, even if they're repeated verbatim under secondary dwelling unit, which is not what I'm doing, but if that's what I'm interested in, then I'm gonna see them there.
Well, and take, take for example, parking. There is differences in parking between a guest house and a secondary unit, but it really doesn't speak to that. But if you had under guest houses, all the different categories like E and, you know, D, you would be able to say, you know, spell out those changes.
And I, you know, and to amplify on her point, like parking, you, you read out of the parking section of the zone, you know, that, that makes people crazy. If, even if it's repetitious, let's put parking in here and just say what it says in the, in the parking section. The one thing that, you know, if, yeah, if, if a separate water meter is not required, just put that section and say it's not required, you know. What about the permit requirements for a guest house? What about the permit requirements for a guest house?
Well, so it's going to be new development, so it's going to require coastal development permit, same as, well, that's just going to follow our regular coastal development permit section. There's no exception. It's, so that has some interesting little nuances about which side of Main Street you're doing your additions to, et cetera. So, all of those same things would apply, but we could definitely have a section that just notes that a coastal development permit is required pursuant to that coastal development section. It'd be a shorter sentence. But also, you know, if somebody were asking for some sort of, I can't really think why you would, you might be adding on a guest house to a non-conforming structure, so then you're back in the usual conditional use permit for additions to non-conforming structures.
Yeah, in some instances, you could ask the guest house without requiring any permitting other than building.
That's quite possible. So it's like pursuant to the coastal development permit section, period.
Yeah, we're not going to.
We're not making, yeah.
We're not going to treat it differently than any other addition, the way it sits now. Secondary units are treated differently. We're making an affirmative permit action on those because.
We have to.
That's, yeah, it's adding another dwelling potentially, so.
Well, I'm.
Although we could, it could be, it could be a ministerial thing that we don't, we don't do that for, but it doesn't make a lot.
So, I'm, I'm, I'm a little, so if you're going to, if you're going to build a guest house, okay, what permit do you need?
You need whatever permit you need to do an addition to your house, which means you may need a permit or you may not need a permit, because some additions don't require planning permits, just building permits.
So, for instance, additions to existing single-family homes, properties located outside the appeal jurisdiction, no coastal permit is required.
Right.
So, in that case, no coastal permit would be required. You'd need a building permit. It's, it's kind of.
Except if it's a non-conforming.
Correctly.
So, that's the same as for the secondary dwelling unit, isn't it?
No, for the secondary dwelling units, how did we do this? We just required a coastal development permit because it's a new dwelling. It's not exactly the same.
Mostly, it's for the notification piece of it, you know, so you see somebody, especially if you're adding the detached one in the backyard, your neighbor sees that all of a sudden you have this new unit popping up, then it's kind of more from a notification standpoint.
So, okay, so if I'm, if I'm hearing, and guys, if I'm being dense, please let me know, if I, if I'm hearing you correctly, the difference is that for a guest house, administrative coastal development permit would only be required if you're inside the coastal appeals jurisdiction, whereas with a, with a secondary unit, it's inside or outside the coastal appeal. Okay, so, let's put that under guest house, so that people will.
So, there's, then there's one other caveat. If you're going to, if we're going to add that in there, then it's the, or it's non-conforming.
Well, but that's, Section G in the next section has the, has the part about non-conforming. If we just put Section G and say, and say only, and, and where, in the last sentence where it says in or outside, if we simply replace in or with only, or, no, I'm sorry, in or outside, if we just say only within the coastal, then we'll have it crystal clear.
Can I ask a question? If we don't do some kind of planning permit, and it's just a building permit, how do we track these things becoming entities in town? Because I would, I would think there'd be some benefit to us tracking how many of these things actually start occurring, either for things like the housing component to prove that we added X number of guest units or things like that, because if you don't have it somehow traced through the administrative piece, it just ends up being a building permit number.
Well, so far, we have tracked them more through planning permits. It's possible we could create a category, I don't know, I'm not as good at HDL.
Yeah, our current tracking system, I don't know that it has an easy way to allow us to track them.
Yeah, I just think.
I mean, your point's, I mean, point's well taken. We'll probably, we're going to, we'll have a construction type later on when we, as we're updating our, moving over to City Works, that allows us to search it, but right now we don't have a.
Because there's things like, you know, Richard's always so articulate about, you know, our, our water sewer thing. How do we really know how many extra, you know, units of things we've added to the city? It'd be kind of interesting to know, we added 50 guest houses, 400 secondary dwelling units, and out of that we have X number of, I don't know what the right unit is, but these things producing, you know.
Well, we can run reports on those types of things. I mean, we do get, we can run reports on new single-family homes, remodels and additions, and we'd have to just go through and look and see what the description is. If it said secondary unit, then, I mean, it's a little more manual now, but that's what we would run the report on. We'd say over this timeframe from the last time that we did it, because there's totals in our housing element, I mean, so we did it before. You would run the numbers and you have to pull out what the descriptions are of these things, I mean, you just have to look at them a little more closely, whereas in the future, we'll have ability to check a box and then search on that specific.
So, I guess my perspective is, I don't care what permit type it is, as long as we have the ability to track trending these things somehow.
We do right now, it'll be much better as soon as we, you know, finish implementing or, when we're done implementing the City Works program.
But the, the other, I mean, the other question Scotty is if, following up on what you're saying, if there is no permit, okay, then who, how is it decided that it's consistent with development standards, and how is it decided that the secondary unit is consistent or reasonably compatible with the architectural style? I mean, those are kind of.
Well, the secondary unit requires the coastal development permit. The guest house, as it stands right now, it doesn't. It's treated like any other addition. So it can be changed, but understand right now that additions happen to houses right now.
Right.
That can go straight to building. And then how are they reviewed? Well, they're reviewed by planning staff because it routed to planning staff for review.
So, even though there's, it's only a building permit, planning staff is involved, I mean, they don't just go to.
So, so anytime there's, there's an addition to something, commercial or residential, it gets routed to fire and planning and building and engineering. So, all departments look at all the, all those types of things when they come in, all those types of permits are routed through, I mean, there's a big stack of them, you've seen them in my office, in the bins, and so that's, that's what that is. Those are those routes, and then I usually hand them out to the planners that have been working on them. Sometimes we get the ones that don't require permits, though, and so we review them for setbacks and are they using, matching materials to the, to the existing homes and that type of thing, so.
I have a question. On a guest house, it can be either attached or detached. So, if it's a detached, it's a separate, I mean, a truly separate dwelling, it still goes under an addition?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, that's the way it is now. I mean, you could say, we don't like that, and we think you should have a coastal development permit for it, and we could add that, but right now it's treated like an addition. That's the only point, so you could change that.
I mean, it's not intended to be a separate dwelling, it's just, it's like an accessory, it really is a sort of an accessory structure.
But then again, a lot of the guest houses will essentially be part, will be attached in, or essentially a second, a third or a fourth bedroom that has the doorway closed off. It essentially turns it into, turns a bedroom with an en suite bedroom with.
Well, in these ones, you can't have the door that connects, so.
Right.
So it has to have.
So if you close, if you wall the doorway off.
Yeah.
Then it's, it's essentially an en suite bedroom.
So we find these, okay, so this is, here's an example, I mean, just for your knowledge, we find these things sometimes. People come in like, hey, we want to do an addition, and we're like, what's that? And they say, well, we have a process, and you can get that permitted if you want, but you need to, you know, submit your application and go through the process to get that, to get that okay. It comes up relatively frequently. We do get the, you know, the inquiries, the complaints about people converting garages and things like that, which you can't keep, but, but yeah, I mean, these are things that actually, we probably get a handful of these a year, whether this type of thing comes up, I mean, three or four of them, maybe.
Well, is, it doesn't, it doesn't sound like it would change the level of review in terms of development standards and design if we were to require some sort of permit through planning. In other words, you guys are involved with it anyway, so you're.
It requires the preparation of a coastal development permit. It requires the noticing and the timeframe that goes along with that. That's what it requires.
Yeah, but would it, well, would it have to be a coastal, but could it be a minor use permit, or?
It could be, yes. It could be, yes. The answer to your question is yes. It could be a minor use permit. The question then is, do our minor use permits require us, I mean, the reason to do this would probably, one, we're already checking it for compliance, so we're already doing that. It would really be to notify neighbors that this is happening, and I think that's the hole in the ordinance, the way it sits now, where we have these things that can be, you can get very large additions done that don't require any notification to your neighbors. One day, you know, contractors show up next door and they're building a two-story addition onto the house, and you have no say over it. So you don't know, you didn't know what was going to happen, so. I think really the, the reason to do this is the notification requirement, so I would say, does the minor use permit require notification?
Yes.
It does? Okay, so, so then, yeah, we could do that process. Doesn't have to be a CDP.
How much more work does it require other than the notification part? How much, how much?
It's, it's the same thing, where you have to, you.
You do findings and conditions, and you prepare a permit, and.
You have templates, I mean, that we use for these things.
And what's the cost?
I don't have the fee with me, fee schedule with me.
Yeah, I don't know, what's.
There is a cost.
Yeah.
There is a permitting fee. Yeah, we don't work for free. Sometimes we do.
Yeah, I mean, like admin CDPs are seven or eight hundred bucks, something like that. I don't know what the minor use permit, though, is.
Be less, though, right? We don't know.
I don't remember off the top of my head right now. And my iPad isn't working right now, so I can't look it up.
The requirement would be, would be more of a hindrance for people and more of a detriment for people, for people to not, to not come forward, because it's going to be an increased cost, 750 bucks or something, so they're not going.
And it would slow the process down.
It would slow the process down, and people are not going, are going to use that as an excuse not to come get a permit. So that's what I.
But just the same way we review building plans, you know, building permit applications for conformance with zoning ordinance standards, if someone comes in with a guest house and we have standards for a guest house, then they need to meet those standards or apply for an exception. And frankly, in some places, people treat secondary dwelling units that way, too, so it's practically a building permit. Sometimes there's just a fee for conformance, you know, compliance review. So, it's not that, it's not that we don't look for zoning conformance, even if there's not, there doesn't have to be a planning permit associated for us to do that.
So it sounds like the, the pro on this or the advantage is, it would be easier for you to track internally to get, for confirmation.
And the noticing.
The pro is the noticing. I mean, that's what, that's what this is all about, because we're already reviewing it for compliance through building. It's, I'll be honest with you, right now, the way our ordinance is, we review some things that come in as building permits that are big additions, and those things that are two stories, I'm always, I mean, we spend a lot of time looking at them to make sure they're compliant, you know, consistent with the neighborhood and whatnot, because if I'm really uncomfortable with something, I can take it to the planning commission, but you kind of are like, I wonder how, what's going to happen when we release this, you know, what the reaction's going to be, because people don't know, you don't like to surprise people, but that's the way our ordinance is, and we have to apply it fairly to everybody. I mean, that's, so that is kind of a hole in there, and so I don't have a bunch of heartache about requiring a permitting process if you want to for guest houses, because it gives that notice that I think people should have. I mean, I just, if we had a different mechanism for it, then do that. We don't have a zone clearance process that's one of those, pay your 250 bucks and we do the notice, and we don't have that.
You know, you think about, you think about a guest house as, you know, or even a secondary dwelling as this little, little thing in the backyard, but truth of the matter is, it could be on top of a garage, it could be a second-story addition on top of a house, I mean, it could be fairly significant.
I mean, I've seen secondary dwelling ordinances that limit, you know, as part of their design review, that it's a single-story structure, boom. I mean, you can get really prescriptive with it, it just depends how, you know, it's sort of hard, because every situation is different, so.
I'm kind of leaning toward the CDP or what you were saying, to track it, because that, that kind of goes and it forces us into the design standards that we've been working on, and it kind of gives the neighborhood compatibility, get the people a little bit more involved. I wish it wasn't so expensive, I mean, it would be nice, but, you know, I, I feel that that part, that the neighborhood part of it is, is important enough to do that.
I would, I would support going for a minor use permit, and that way we have noticing and some tracking.
Okay.
I'm just concerned about the additional cost. Each additional cost we put out there, there's going to be X number of people that are going to use that, you know, are going to avoid coming forward and, you know, to go through the process. I get a lot of, in, you know, my business, we get a lot, you know, a lot of resistance for, you know, anybody even getting building permits, and I can tell you, I can drive up the street and there's 50 to 70% of the projects that are going on in this town don't have a building permit.
We find them daily.
Yeah. So, the more things that we do to put added burden and added costs on, the less chance we're going to get them permitted, and so if they're not permitted, they're definitely not going to be in compliance.
Well, we can at least go look what the fee is, I just don't know what it is off the top of my head.
I mean, the threshold we're talking about for the guest house is 650 square feet, so even, let's assume, somebody like Commissioner Lurk does a bang-up job of costing this thing out at maybe $200 a square foot, you're still talking about, you know, 130, $140,000 project, and so I don't know what these fees are, but, you know, we're not talking about a $10,000 addition to do these things, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars to
So, I guess the question is, where do we come down in terms of the CDP? That would be the appropriate permit, right?
Well, I think we could do, I think if the minor use permit requires a noticing, then I think we probably should go with that, because I'm pretty sure it's less than the administrative coastal development permit.
Yes.
I just can't remember off the top of my head what the number is, I, yeah, so, but I know it's less, so.
But then, is it an either-or situation? Is it, in other words, can you say, okay, for the, for the, for the secondary dwelling unit, we're already requiring a CDP regardless, okay? So, can we say for the guest house, if you're outside of the coastal region, it's just a minor use permit, but if you're inside, you only need the coastal development permit, you don't have to get a minor use and a.
Yeah, we should.
It's probably cheaper to just do the minor use permit, but also coastal development permits.
Don't need one anyway in the appeal zone.
When, yeah, when a coastal development permit might be required, but a minor use permit already is required, does that work? Where you just charge the fee for the minor. Where you just charge the fee for the minor use permit, or is that only with conditional use?
Well, what I'm, yeah, what I'm thinking is, if you're in the appeal zone, you have to get the coastal development permit anyway.
Right, we don't want to hit them with two.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. And so we could just say, if you're out, then do the minor use permit, but in, you do the coastal development permit.
Okay, what about the vacation rental issue?
I go back to that preface piece we said, that's in here, that says it's, the whole gist of this is to produce affordable housing. Affordable housing isn't vacation housing.
So we, we're saying neither, right? Neither, neither the main house nor the...
It's all made, okay.
Yeah. Consistently with, with the coastal act, so, so then we're just going to mirror the same, the same paragraphs under guest house and, and secondary dwelling unit, right? Have the same category. As a matter of fact, you know what would, what would be really helpful, I think, to people? Would be to put together a table with some of these things, you know, guest house versus, you know?
Yes, yes. We could definitely do that, and I sort of started to do that just to keep it straight in my own mind, so I, I agree, that's a good... Let me just ask the question about vacation rentals. What about vaci... Oh, you can't rent your guest house, so never mind.
Yeah, but, but we're kind of doing them both together here, so, but what about with the secondary dwelling unit, the owner occupancy issue? We didn't, we didn't resolve that one.
And what's actually printed in my zoning ordinance now, which was from a previous ordinance that wasn't certified, it does address, oh gosh, now I'm in the wrong section, but I'll be there. It does address the owner occupancy. And this is what it says. Single-family residences with approved secondary units shall not have the secondary unit rented independently of the main residence when neither is occupied by the owner.
Oh.
What does that mean in layman's terms?
Single residences approved with secondary units shall not have the secondary unit rented when neither is occupied. So basically, that says one or the other has to be owner occupied, is what it says right now. And then it goes on to say that, that both units may be rented under a single rental agreement if the owner is not occupying either unit, which sort of answers the third-generation question of whatever.
It basically turns it into a guest house.
But then the other, but then the other question is, could, could the renter sublet?
The terms of the single rental agreement shall not allow sublease of one unit. An owner is deemed to occupy a unit if they hold it off the rental market for their own use, is the way, other people have different ways of owner occupancy.
That would mean they could use it as a vacation home.
Yep, that's what that means to me. Some people have, you know, being on the tax roll as this is your primary residence, that's one way of tracking it. You know, at some point, it gets down to how much do you want to track it to? So I'll just throw that out there.
I guess to me, you know, if we go back to the fundamental thing, that it's meant to be affordable housing, affordable housing can be two rentals, it's just not vacation rentals.
Right.
So I'm less, I'm, I'm really concerned that we don't develop a culture of, we're unable to invest in the city housing stock unless you're an owner, occupant. And that, that could be a dangerous position to be in. We don't want to create housing stock that doesn't have the ability to be sold, you know? So I'd be willing to be more flexible on that, as long as it's not the vacation rental. But the goal would be to create affordable housing, which the genesis of it is, you're, you're living in one. But I, like I say, by the second, third generation of these things turning over, I just don't see that as being viable.
But if you allow them to be rented separately, how, what's the distinction between R1 and R2?
The affordability. The affordability, because they're affordable by design. They're, they're smaller units.
Well, one, one would be.
One is a smaller unit, and that is the essence of, of the secondary unit proposal by the state. We're trying to, they're trying to generate these smaller units that'll be rented cheaper for lower, to, you know, for lower cost. So if you, if you don't allow them to be rented separately, you're not, you're not going to, you're basically saying you got to rent 3,000 square feet rather than renting 2,500 square feet with, and then you renting, as a single mom, being able to rent the 500 square feet.
Right.
So...
But just to be the devil's advocate, just play devil's advocate.
Okay, I'm trying, I'm doing that.
To me, to me, part of the premise of secondary dwelling units, and part of what makes them palatable to sing, to existing single-family neighborhoods, is the concept that the owner who has an equity investment in the property is onsite, is making sure that, you know, there's not trash in the yard and there's not, you know? And once you eliminate that, you don't, you no longer have that neighborhood safeguard.
Right, but then you also force somebody to either rent a, you know, you're, you're taking that smaller unit that you tried to produce with this ordinance, you're taking it off the market.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that. I mean, it's, it's kind of a balance in a way.
So I, you know, I think you have, you have the safeguards of ownership, property ownership, as far as, you know, they're going to, they're, you know, if somebody's got one unit, if you've got 50 of these and you're renting out 50 of them, I see a problem with that. But if somebody gets in a situation where they're, they have to move out of the unit, then this allows them to bridge an economic gap.
Yeah, but what about the other, what about the other situation exactly? Exactly, what about, you know, okay, I, this is my retirement plan. I'm going to buy every, every house with a secondary unit that comes on the market, and I'm going to rent them out to a whole bunch of people. I mean, you know, it's, it's a different animal.
Then, yeah.
I think it's already happening. And, I mean, and I, and I don't know how you're going to be able to track it. I know in my neighborhood that it's happening, so I would, you know, if you, if you can't enforce it, I don't think we should put it as a, you know, part of this whole zoning ordinance.
You can't, you can't enforce it. We can enforce it, because we can enforce it through complaints, we can enforce it through reporting requirements, we can re, we can enforce it, yeah, through, you know, there's different ways that we can go about doing that. The active enforcement thing's probably less likely, because we have a limited staff, but following up, when we got a complaint about something, it's probably not that big of a deal. We could have a requirement on here that you have a secondary unit permit that we, deed restriction that we record against the property, so then you have a constructive notice. So any of those, if we have the constructive notice recorded against title, then, then we can go after anybody who's not compliant.
But then I think you get to what Commissioner Lucas was saying, that people aren't going to invest. It's going to be a lot harder to sell those houses with the secondary unit if there is a deed restriction on it, that, you know, you would have to be owner occupied. I just...
We, we had the ordinance in Pismo, we had it for eight years. It was recorded, the deed restriction, we didn't have an issue with it. I mean, there was no, there was no problem whatsoever with it.
I would, I would think potential homebuyers would see the secondary unit as an asset. I would think it'd make it easier to market the home than...
I'm just, tenless of this boat does that, too.
Not if you're doing it as an investment. And not if you're buying the house as an investment as opposed to a, your primary residence.
Oh, but you have a legal rental unit on your property, which is kind of nice.
Well, and I, and I'm not sure if, I'm not sure if decreasing the number of houses in Morro Bay that are bought up for vacation rentals is necessarily a bad thing.
Well, we're still, we're still prohibiting vacation rentals.
Not, not, not for vacation, not vacation rentals.
We're talking about long-term rentals.
I'm talking, I'm talking long-term.
No, I didn't mean to say vacation rentals, I meant vacation houses, because, you know, 20%, I mean, you talk about impacting the housing market, 20% of the, of the homes in Morro Bay are vacant, because they're vacation homes. And if you make it more attractive for people to buy them and live here, that may be a Well, we're, we're making a recommendation to the city. Okay, let's just, let's just look at, let's just take a straw poll. Who, who would be in favor of an ownership clause?
I think, I think the goal of ownership is, is really good. I'm just trying to, you know, when you, when you get into these things, now if we've got two properties on here, now, now your average lower-end thing is going to be 600 grand. You're going to have a 300 grand, or 350 grand main house, and you're going to have a 200 grand, you know, so we're going to, we're going to be wiping out the lower-cost thing, so somebody's going to have to come in and really be able to make this thing work economically with these value-added components in there. And I'm not against the owner occup, that's my preference. I just don't have the capacity to play all the real estate scenarios that keep this being an attractive place to invest in, because I think that's, that's the key thing. It's sad to me in a way, you know, we've got houses, but then do we build schools? We've got houses, but then, you know, our, our grocery stores aren't doing as well as they could. And if these were owner occupied, or if they were rented all the time, we'd have more people creating more economy here, which I think would be a, a powerful thing. So I want to watch we don't do anything that precludes the scenario where we've got vacancies. So it, to me, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a goal versus playing out the scenarios. I, I'm happy to vote for a straw poll, but I don't know if I've got the wisdom to make that call. That's...
I, I, my feelings are, the issue is the vacation rental. I, I kind of go back to that, because to me, if you have a vacation rental, then that money, the investment that you do in the community isn't reflected, the burden that you put on the infrastructure isn't reflective of what the community benefit is from it, okay? And a rental seems to me like you could, you could bring, you could make it affordable, you could have, you know, like either, either or, okay? And then even people that rent, you know, they become part of the community and all that. But the vacation rental, I know for a fact, it's, it surcharges our infrastructure. And what that happens is it burdens, ends up burdening, burdening the community, being that it's a rental or a person that owns the house. Person that owns the house, if he's getting burdened, he's going to just pass it down to the renter to make up for it. So I, I think that having, kind of focusing on how we're going to handle the vacation rental part of it, more so than just the rental part of it.
I'm really uncomfortable saying it has to be owner occupied. I certainly would prefer it, and I think it's better for the neighborhood for it to be owner occupied. But I do think there's a lot of good people out there in long-term rentals, and I think if you turn it to owner occupied only, you know, for the primary, that you're going to take houses off the market.
But you're probably not going to take affordable houses off the market. You're, you're probably talking about a 2,500 square-foot house that's not, not going to be particularly affordable.
I still don't want to see owner occupied on.
Okay, well, then I, I, the consensus of the commission is clear, and I will defer to it. I won't, I'm not changing my mind, but I'll defer to it.
Okay, that's great. And, and just to note that the, the ordinance that was adopted by council in May of 2014 did not have an owner occupancy clause in it.
And I agree with that.
Okay, so we're pretty much down to 1758 coastal development permits and procedures. Oh, I see, that's just to remove secondary units from the regular coastal development process and go to, into the administrative process. Does anyone...
Correct.
...object to that?
That, that's basically, that's state law, so we, we really can't bring it to a public hearing, unless they're asking for some kind of exception, variance, or whatever, which they're certainly welcome to do, and, but otherwise, that's part of that law. So that it would be administratively reviewed without a public hearing. And we could notice.
But an administrative CDP can be appealed, right? In other words, it could be appealed to the council if the neighborhood is upset about what's being proposed.
That's correct. It can be appealed, if it's in the coastal commission jurisdiction, appeal jurisdiction, it can be appealed to coastal commission.
Can I go backwards at this point? The square footage is net livable square footage, not total square footage, including livable square footage plus garage. Do we have, do we have a, so, so actually, the 900 square-foot thing is, what's, what's our minimum garage size, 10 by 24?
If it's a single car, it's a clearance of 11 by 20.
So you've got 220 square feet, so is it 900 that includes a 220 square-foot garage, or is it 900 plus another 220 square feet for a garage?
It's 900, and it could include a garage, but the parking for the secondary dwelling unit does not have to be covered and enclosed.
So we didn't answer the question that you just asked, other than to say that it can or can't be. It's not, we didn't define it, I guess, is the answer.
I just want to make sure we haven't created a situation where we're requiring people to build 1,200 square foot.
Well, like Whitney said, it doesn't have to be covered and closed. If they want to cover and close it, then the planning commission might want to tell us, do you want it to be part of that 900 square feet, or do you want it to be separate from the 900 square feet?
It's currently separate, right? It's currently separate.
I don't know that it's...
The total floor area not including a garage for a second, for a detached secondary dwelling unit shall not exceed...
Right. And in state law, it does refer to living area.
So we could be looking at, by...
Yep.
...right, 1,100 square feet as the max. What if they put in a two-car garage?
They could build a two-car garage. It'd be 1,300 square feet.
We have seen houses come in here with five- and six-car garages.
Right, yeah. I mean, at that point, I, I suppose you could, you know, ask for the conditional use permit. In all, in all seriousness, though, we, we could, you already are kind of headed in that direction, that only, let's see. I mean, as it is, as it stands now, the tandem parking question is only allowed with a conditional use permit. So, you know, you could add tandem or covered parking is only allowed with a conditional use permit.
I don't know that we want to discourage covered, covered and closed parking. I don't know, hey, it's getting late. But I don't know that we want to probably discourage that, which that might do.
My, my only concern is that by right, we're giving people, you know, if we talk about 900 square feet, but then all of a sudden, oh, by right, I can build 1,100 square feet here, or whatever it ends up being, you know? And that's, it's just, it's just creep of, you know, I, I really like to tell somebody who calls me, and occasionally I do get called, you know, what about my expectation of, you know, if I buy in Morro Bay, what am I going to see? And I say, well, you know, check the, check the zoning out and things like that. And there should be an anticipation of, what's the maximum I'm going to see in my neighborhood? And so if we get into the secondary dwelling thing, and we're specifically are getting at 900 instead of 1,200, I don't want to have a backdoor for 1,200 square foot by right, whatever the combination is. So I almost feel more comfortable saying 900 is the maximum gross square footage without a, without a, coming to the commission or something like that.
We could do that. We could do that. We could do that.
Didn't we have that in there? I thought that was the, that you had 900 square feet without a
Not including the garage, so the garage could be extra.
So that's, so all you have to do is cross out the not in that sentence.
There's that legal ease, yes.
That's a good pickup, Michael, because really what we're doing is, honestly, you say it's, why would we discourage covered enclosed parking? But the truth of the matter is, what we're probably discouraging is more covered enclosed storage for the primary dwelling unit. You know that's going to be full of canoes and washing machines and Good pickup. So let's, so should we go through the list of options? Personally, the options that you ask us to consider, Whitney, I really think we could consider them better if we just heard the text and went through them one by one, knowing
Oh, painful, okay.
I hate to do that at this hour, but I think that's the way to do it.
Okay.
Is this coming back to us again or is this just
Potentially.
I think with all of the changes, we should give you a clean version to take another look at to make sure we, you know, adequately addressed the discussion topics.
Okay, whoops, let's go back one more page, start at the beginning. So we talked about owner occupancy and you're not interested, so that's good. Minimum lot size is just sometimes appears, I noticed that in just reviewing different ordinances. Some people require that the lot size be conforming. That would pretty much rule out most of Morro Bay's lots for availability for secondary dwelling units since our minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet. And we don't see that many of those or whole neighborhoods that barely exceed 4,000 and some that barely exceed less than that. So when we kind of battered that notion around, the number like 3,500 came up because that didn't seem totally unfair, but that still might rule out, what do we have, those 40 by 60 lots?
It's going to rule out most of the North Morro Bay.
That's correct. Of course, when you think about it, those are sort of meant to be like trailer parking or something, I don't know, a long, long time ago, that's a very old subdivision for kind of vacation
I mean, up there, you wouldn't really be able to build, those are pretty much built-out footprints, aren't they, in North Morro Bay?
They pretty much are. I think I looked at one point and there were like 12 vacant lots up there.
And the reality is that it doesn't impact, since we're requiring them to meet the zone requirements, it does, a secondary dwelling unit doesn't impact any more than if they added on to the primary, you know, made the, in fact, it probably impacts less because they have to set aside parking.
They're going to be small, right. This isn't, there certainly isn't anything that you would have to do and frankly, in some of the ordinances that I've seen, it seemed almost exclusionary. I mean, a minimum lot size would have that effect, just the way you just discussed.
And also, there's, you can create a secondary dwelling unit internally within an existing structure, so, you know, there may be no enlargement of the structure at all.
Sounds correct as well, yeah. So we'll scrap minimum lot size?
Yeah, I don't see any downside to scrapping it because we've got the zoning criteria to protect it and most people would be looking at challenging it, challenging the lot size to go into the right, it kind of gets in the way of the right to build the secondary unit based on lot size.
That's exactly correct, I think. I mean, I would agree with you on that. Then minimum unit size, we've had ordinances that have been approved by the City of Morro Bay that had a 300 square foot minimum size. State law requires that it be at least an efficiency, which is 150 square feet. You may or may not need to do that, but I have seen that too, so we just included it in something for your consideration. We didn't have a particular recommendation for all of these, which is why they were sort of listed so casually, but we do have language out there.
I think if you can make the unit livable, you know, per code, then I think that's your minimum lot size or minimum unit size.
Minimum unit size, okay.
I think the other thing too is it encourages creativity to come up with unique solutions, you know, studio kinds of units and things like that, so.
So we're going to skip minimum unit size, okay.
You said the state law says 150, though?
Yeah, that's pretty small.
Yeah. What did you have in Pismo, did you have anything like that in Pismo?
We didn't have a minimum unit size.
So we kind of touched on deed restrictions a little bit, a little bit not, and so I will offer you some language, just in the event you might be interested in doing something like that. Prior to issuance of a building permit, a covenant agreement shall be recorded, which discloses the maximum size of the secondary dwelling unit and stipulates that the secondary dwelling unit cannot be sold separately, which is a state law thing, or used as a vacation rental and that one of the units on site must be occupied by the property owner or owners. So we'll get rid of that. The covenant may also contain authorization for inspections and specify remedies in the event of non-compliance with this section.
Once you get rid of the owner
Well, I think the idea, I think the idea that the two units can't be sold separately is important, but you say that's covered by state law already?
That is in state law and sometimes it's, I think in some places where they, where you might have large lot sizes, for instance, just because and you build a secondary dwelling unit, then apparently it's been an issue in some places where people would then come in and be like, oh, I'm going to subdivide this now, I've got like, you know, two houses, two lots. And that's, you'll often see a no subdivision clause in different ordinances for that reason. I don't know that that's so much of an issue here in Morro Bay because just to meet our subdivision standards, you would at a minimum have to have, you know, 1,200 square foot lot. There aren't lots of those.
You'd have to have a second lateral for that too, wouldn't you?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. You'd have to have all new utilities, et cetera. So I think some, I think early ordinances trying to comply with state law just sort of reiterated a lot of what was in it where in all practicality, it's kind of, it's something that's going to be adhered to naturally with existing regulations. Oh, good.
The only reason that we might, the only reason that we might need to have it would be if the folks in Sacramento decide to change the law and we really still would not like them to be sold separately.
Do we, you don't have to have a, is it technically a lot split into a condominium? I mean, could you turn
It's technically a subdivision. So that hence the no subdivision, it's like not sold separately, no subdivision.
I like the idea that the no subdivision guarantees it's not going to happen through some mechanism because I think we want to keep that entity intact.
Well, I don't, I don't think you could buy a unit that doesn't have its own APN. You couldn't get title insurance on it, so I don't see how you would buy it.
So you could have this, so I guess the scenario that you're talking about is you have a example, like you said airspace, you have something that's designed that could be turned into an airspace condominium type situation where you're on a multifamily lot, R2, where you could have two units, but instead you had the primary unit, you built a secondary unit, now you want to subdivide it.
That's exactly right.
That's what, that's when that could happen because you could put a parcel map, which is an airspace parcel map on top of it, that separates the units, as long as it met building code requirements, you'd be fine, you could have separate APNs assigned to it, boom, you're done. And the lot size stays the same, the lot size there stays the same because you're just subdividing the airspace.
Let's let a future group worry about how those things are, but I think it's still good to keep it in there, just protects the people around from knowing that that's not going to be subdivided somehow.
A no subdivision clause, you're in favor of that, okay. We can do that. Would you like me to read you some language?
Yeah, could you read it again?
So this is different, okay, now I'm moving on and I can go back, but no subdivision in the property. The secondary dwelling unit shall not be sold separately and no subdivision in the property shall be allowed where a secondary dwelling has been established unless the subdivision meets all requirements of zoning and subdivision regulations. That might be a little bit strange, or just leave that last part out?
Yeah, I would leave the last part out.
And this is, are we still talking about the deed restriction? This would not be in the deed or is this in the ordinance?
This would just be an ordinance requirement and not a separate issue from a deed restriction. So you could have no deed restriction, but just have this be a no subdivision clause, you know, standard.
Yeah, that's, I'd agree with that.
So that would, that would nip the
This scenario he just described.
Yeah, in the condominium.
Yep.
Right. Okay, so we like subdivision. And I didn't really get a read on deed restriction from you guys.
It sounds like this kind of does the same thing that we were trying to get at, but from a different angle.
Yeah, I mean, a deed restriction can have any number of things in it. It doesn't, it wouldn't necessarily have to have an owner occupancy clause, it might just clarify, you know, for future owners that this was created and it was allowed to be this size and this is, you know, the intent of it or, I mean, it could stipulate.
I can see deed restriction as a notification that, you know, during the purchasing process, you're going to look at deed restrictions. You're not going to go back and look at, you know, secondary unit ordinances in the town. So as far as a notification process, but as far as a penalty or, you know.
It seems like it's an encumbrance, but it isn't. It's actually a benefit to make sure everybody who would potentially want that, purchase that property is aware of the context that it was created, so they don't think, oh, I bought a duplex.
Right, and the cost to someone developing a secondary unit is just the cost of recording, really.
Let me ask you, let me just ask, a deed restriction runs with the land, correctly?
That is correct.
So if you say no subdivision in a deed restriction, does that, would, let's say they had a big lot, would that prohibit them from someday in the future tearing down both of the houses, splitting the lot in two and selling off the two lots?
No, that's what they would have to do and you would have to have language that would enable somebody to do that.
And then we'd have to record something else on the property that explained that.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
Something like, you can record memorandums that address things that are recorded on properties, you'd have to do something like that.
We had a deed restriction on one of our, one of the properties that said you couldn't sell to a non-Caucasian.
Yep.
You know, it was a typical deed restriction at the time.
Laundry.
So it does change.
Okay, let me ask you this, is there any other way to assure notification, is there, like just requiring a real estate notification of whatever it is that we want them to be notified of?
Not really.
I mean, I know, for example, if you're within so many yards of an airport, there's a requirement, a deed, a real estate notification requirement.
Yeah, but that's shown on your title. It's shown, that's how they know, I mean, it's on the title.
I'm sorry, but what are we going to put in the deed restriction? I mean, what is, what are we talking about?
You could address the vacation rental issue, you could address, you could just reiterate the not sold separately subdivision if you wanted to. As I noted, some people, some cities have used this mostly regarding the owner occupancy. You could address authorization for inspections, although that probably would just come about as a complaint or if someone were buying the property and wanted to have an inspection.
The nice thing about it too is if you did one of these things where somehow the house appeared to be a single house, but it actually had been used to take advantage of that secondary unit, you're telling somebody the secondary unit
Is legal.
privilege has been used on the dwelling already. You don't have another capacity to add another secondary unit unless you remove the
That's true.
Something like that. I keep going back in the thing, oh, I've got a right to build a secondary unit on that property and, oh, no, it's already been used because here it is in the deed that tells me it's been used. So you think you have a right unless you go through, the deed seems to be a very clear way to tell you, you've got a, you know, golden cookie there, that you're not going to be able to use it again unless you change something pre-arranged.
Or to build a guest house if you have a secondary or to build a secondary if you have a guest house.
Right. I mean, if you were interested in that, I really probably would have to come back with a lot more detailed language. I mean, or, and what I would like from you is direction on what you think it might want to address.
What I hear so far is the vacation rental issue, the inability to subdivide or to sell separately and the notification that their quote second unit quota had been used up. And I realize that's really terrible phrasing, but it's late.
And then included in that, I think, is a, you know, is a grandfather clause where they, where if the present use changes, that it could then nullify the restriction.
Right. Are you saying that if you had a guest house that was attached and then you knocked through a wall and made it attached, then you could actually build a secondary unit?
Yes.
As long as you had the space, et cetera?
Yes.
So for a want of a door through a wall, it nullifies it.
So basically, if you change the conditions on the ground, then it would then change the deed restriction. That would solve the problem of somebody, okay, they come in and tear down, say they are on a large lot, the 12,000 square foot lot, and they've got a, you know, primary and a secondary unit. Okay, well, if they tear down both, all of that, then you can then subdivide it.
Although, what if you only tore down the secondary?
As long as, as long as it met the present, you know, requirements for the code to do what you're doing, then it would be fine.
Yeah, you wouldn't really have to tear down the primary as well.
No, as long as it wasn't straddling the lot, the new lot line.
Okay, so it sounds like I'm going to need to work on that, the deed restriction aspect, and bring that back to you. Is that what it sounds like to you guys?
We'll include, we'll include what's in there. The deed restriction will be something that's separate that we, you know, draft up separately, but the pieces that are included in there would be just part of whatever we bring back with them for the ordinance anyway.
Okay.
Are you, are you trying to get this to the city council and the
They would love to see this as soon as we can do it.
I keep getting asked where it's at.
I mean, if I could, ideally, if I could go forward to, with a draft based on, you know, the direction that you've given me tonight to them in a meeting in a couple of weeks, that would be terrific. They're going to have to have it be introduced and then look at it again anyway.
Yeah, it's likely to be wordsmithed again, so I'm fine with you hearing us and taking this to council. Yeah, it's likely to be wordsmithed again, so I'm fine with you hearing us and taking this to council personally.
Okay, that would be my best case scenario, but of course, it's your decision.
Is everybody, you know, I mean...
I'm really looking a lot for which components you felt were important to have or not important to have. Any like glaring oversights or mistakes, or, you know, the garage, for instance, was a good case in point. That kind of thing is, is what I was hoping to garner from tonight's meeting so that I could then more carefully craft up an ordinance for city council to consider. And then, and then we could, I mean, that would be available for you to look at, but I don't know if you would need to come, if it needs to come back to you. I don't think we know that yet.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine, you know, with you crafting what, you trying to decipher what we're saying up here.
Well, great, thank you. And we appreciate your direction, that's why we're here. Okay, so let's see.
Private open space.
Private open space, and we only have three more things here. That's, you probably see that more with multifamily development and some, some of that in some cities, that's sort of carried over into the secondary dwelling unit ordinances. Typically, it'll say something like a minimum of 50 square feet of sort of separate, you know, private open space. You know, with maybe it has minimum dimensions. A lot of times that turns, you know, sometimes that turns out to be like a little deck or like a little patio space. I think that was more into multifamily development, like I say, that sort of bled into secondary dwelling unit ordinances, but we just thought we would throw that out there.
In theory, if we've met the zoning code for lot coverage, the zoning code has a theory embedded in it about open space within a lot.
I like the way you said in theory. Yes, that is absolutely correct, though. And in Morro Bay, I mean, while we sort of live in a nice climate and you can get out and move around, and our lot coverage is, is a pretty generous, which is to say there's not necessarily a lot of yard left over, but that's the way it is, and that's the way it is all across our different residential zones.
And I could see situations where you've got a secondary unit that's upstairs and it's not accessible to open space, and it's a perfectly fine unit.
Right.
You know, so I, I don't think it's necessary personally.
I think it'd be, I think it'd be really hard to craft one that would work in all the situations.
And it can become difficult, especially in, especially the smaller the lot, the more difficult that does become.
This, this may be a situation where it's just the market will dictate. People who want open space will pick a place that has open space.
Okay, non-conforming secondary dwelling units and violations in enforcement. Oh, where are you? Oh. Non-conforming secondary dwelling units. Okay, let's try this. Non-conforming secondary dwelling units in existence at the time of adoption of this ordinance shall be allowed to continue until such time as the properties containing such non-conforming units expand or enlarge any building area or until such time as 50% or more of the primary single-family dwelling unit or the secondary dwelling unit is destroyed. Thereafter, the secondary dwelling unit on the affected property shall conform to the provisions of this section.
So this, this would apply to legal non-conforming. In other words, this is not the guy who built it without a permit. This is the guy who came and got a permit, but the requirements were different at the time.
That's right.
So...
What about illegals?
So it's basically a grandfather clause?
Yeah.
A legal grandfather clause.
Right, it just, I mean, it just sort of explains to people where, where you might stand. As far as illegal secondary dwelling units, it's just like illegal anything else. It's going to be a matter of code enforcement, unless you have something more to say about that.
Well, no, there, there could be ones that are secondary units that are, that are out there that were, that were built a very long time ago. We have some of them, actually. We've had some come in since I've been here, a couple of them, that were, you know, built back in the 50s and 60s. And one of them, we had them permit the secondary unit. I don't know what we did with the other one. It might have been a tear down rebuild or something, I can't remember which. So you do have other sorts of scenarios, ones that were, that were built quite a long time ago and didn't have specific permits that we have for them. Would otherwise be non-conforming because they don't meet all the requirements.
Okay, so if you have an illegal unit, a non-permitted, let's call it a non-permitted unit, and the owner comes in because they're very honest people and, and say...
We've had that.
We need to get this permitted, or because they want to sell it or whatever. Does it have to meet current code?
So, well, that's, I think, that's where, yeah, that's where Whitney's going right now. So you could have this scenario where, where it was built, it would be an existing non-conforming. So that would be the legal non-conforming thing, something that's been there for a long time. And then do we want to have something that recognizes those? Those that were, we could put a date in there if you wanted, that were built prior to fill in the blank, and are, are grandfathered in. And, or we could put clauses in, I've seen this in a couple of ordinances where they say, hey, you have a sunset, we put a sunset clause in here. We notify everybody in town and say, hey, if you have one of these things, you have 12 months to come in and get the permit. Even if it's non-conforming, we'll give it to you. They don't do it after that point, then they all become non-conforming, but illegal, but not legal non-conforming. And when we would find them, they would have to comply with the current standards.
Yeah, but the issue I have with illegal, illegal means never inspected, okay? So you have no idea what the electrical system, what the wiring is like, what the plumbing is like, what the insulation is like. How do you deal with that? I mean, so you can't just say, oh, okay, here's your permit. You know what I'm saying? Because this could be a death trap.
So, yeah, the one that somebody built and we didn't know about and it happened, and we can tell that it happened 15 years ago. Yeah, I mean, they would have to come through our process, they would have to get building permits for all of that. I mean, we make, it's no different than you put an addition on your house. We found out about it well after the fact. We're like, yeah, you need to come in and get building permits for it.
And that, that involves inspections, right?
Yeah, you have to, you have to come in, give us plans for everything that you have, and, and then we go out there and inspect it, just like, you know, we expect, we inspect an as-built situation, but it's based on the plans that you would have given us so we could approve it if we can. And that happens every once in a while, too, so. It just kind of depends on how you want to deal with these types of things. You could just say, everything's got to comply from here on out, and that's it. Anything that's illegal, we treat it like we treat anything else that was constructed without permits.
Well, the legal, I'm sorry, and you can jump in. The legal, the legal non-conforming, we're, I think we're going to find is, in most cases, not the bill, not the owner's fault, it's, it's the, it's the surveyor's fault from, you know, I think we're going to find what we find with so many of the non-conforming residents. It's six inches over the line or one foot six inches, because the survey lines have changed. And that's a whole different deal, because to me, you know, because six inches is not the end of the world, but those were inspected, they were, you know, up to code, they, you know, it's, it's a situation where you don't have unsafe housing out there, unsafe housing stock out there. So I'm fine with the provision that says they can remain, you know, until there's a major renovation or the eventualities. The illegal ones that I think we really need to talk about.
And I think we would treat those just like any other legal structure that gets built. I mean, when we find them and catch them, you're, you're, you're stuck. You gotta, you gotta prove it to us, so.
Right, but, but this, I like the idea of the sunset clause. I like the idea of saying, look, you know, timeout, you know, no harm, no foul. You're, you know, bring, come in, make sure that it's safe, get it permitted, and move on, you know? But don't, you know, but don't keep hiding it for the next 20 or 30 years, you know, till it burned, till it, till it creates a fire.
So you're sort of talking in, like, kind of an amnesty program or something like that? Okay, yeah, that, I've seen those.
Yeah.
And what, and I like that idea too, because what it would do is, would bring these structures in to be inspected for the first time.
Right.
You know?
I think we just do them, let everybody know about it, and then put a timeline in there. 12 months, 18 months, whatever. And just say, yeah, you know, you can come and get your secondary unit permit underneath the amnesty clause, and it'll require us, it could be anything that's not, doesn't already have a secondary unit permit. Because there's probably a lot of them that don't.
So what, so what kind of notification would you be looking for? Is it just somebody who's watching us at 11 o'clock at night that knows this?
We send out mailers. We, I did this in Pismo. Yeah, I mean, we had, and I think ours was 18 months. We sent out a couple of different mailers out there to everybody and let them know. And what happened? We got, the whole people came in, and we got secondary unit permits, got them inspected, got them looked at, had a bunch of site inspections on them, did record searches and found that we'd permitted them, and then some of them had gotten converted, and, you know, I mean, there's, you know, there's a lot of that. There's any number of scenarios out there. Picked up most of them, had a few of them come in later on after we did that, and we're like, oh, you have to go through a regular permitting process now. You have to comply. The ordinance we had in Pismo allowed for exceptions for secondary units to encourage them. Maybe if you couldn't quite squeeze it in and you needed a little, like, work on a setback or something, you could, you could ask for exceptions, but those all had to go to the planning commission anytime you wanted an exception, so.
Yeah, but, and, you know, I think, I think the non-conforming in terms of setbacks and that kind of stuff, again, that's in the non-conforming, you know, I mean, I would, I wouldn't have a lot of heartburn about approving some of these things that are, that are non-conforming. So, we would, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, they don't, there wouldn't be any penalty for the fact that they didn't conform with, with this. But they would need to be brought up to code. I don't know if there's any way...
It's actually a benefit, because now you're getting a recognized secondary dwelling unit. Because you don't really have that before, so when you go to sell the thing, you're selling it as is, and people are just rolling the dice at that point, I mean, so.
Right. Probably the value of the property would increase substantially if that thing were permitted.
If it's recognized, yeah.
And I think 12 months is too, too short, so I think we need, you know, 18 months or two years or something like that.
My recollection in Pismo, we did it for 18 months. So 18 months plus is a good timeline right in there. 18 months, maybe two years, I don't know.
And this is a really good time to do it, because interest rates are still relatively low, you know, for people that need a home improvement loan to bring things up to code.
Do you have a preference on the timeline?
Two.
Two, okay.
Okay, so I'm hearing you're being in favor of some sort of amnesty clause, and I'll work with Scott and do some research to craft some language for that section. And the last thing, and so did you, were you in favor of having anything addressed, non-conforming secondary dwelling units that might be out there? I want to say that there's probably a total of, well, the last count we did, somewhere between 35 and 40 ones that we know about, so I don't know...
That are illegal?
That are legal.
Legal non-conforming.
Yeah, that are legal in general, and some, a small fraction of those might, at this point, be non-conforming due to some change in site development standards or something. I don't know that we would have a lot of non-conforming.
There'd be ones that we don't, that have not gotten permits, that didn't meet the requirement, you know, that are, maybe the city even permitted them at one point, we just didn't have a process for it, you know, to recognize it or something.
Okay. So are you in favor of keeping a section in that just recognizes that those are out there and under certain conditions, they can just remain until there's some significant development on the site or they're destroyed?
I think that would be, I think that would be reassuring to people, you know? And it's consistent with the way we treat primary dwellings that are non-conforming.
Okay.
But we're, we're talking about them coming in in the next, next two years to get, to get processed, basically?
Well, no, she was, you were talking about legal non-conforming.
There are two things. I'm also talking about ones that might be out there that don't meet the standards of this section. Because they were processed under a different time.
The ones that we noticed that are non-conforming, they'd be, we'd be able to give them a secondary unit permit now, because they're, because they're coming into us now, and so we get to do those reviews on them to make sure they, they were built consistent with code requirements and things like that, so.
Okay, so the, so the ones that were permitted, but were permitted under a previous code and no longer meet the present code would then be upgraded to the new, to...
Well, all we're saying is, you could have the non-conforming thing going on with it, you could still have a secondary unit if it's existing out there, would be, you know...
Until a certain threshold of development takes place on the property, and then it's like, oh, and by the way, while you're doing this, please fix this.
Okay. Then the one thing that I could see...
Yes.
Is if there's, if you're in a condition where, you know, you, the only way you could do is get the tandem parking and create this garage that, you know, and that's how you did it.
That's exactly, that would be, that would be a great example of potentially non-conforming.
Right.
And obviously, people would have been living with it for a while.
Yeah, but if it burns down, you've changed more than 50% of this. So would they be able to build it back to where it was and be legal at that point?
They would need to conform.
They would need to conform, so.
They could ask for, that, you know, it would be that conditional use permit process to ask for a parking exception.
As long as it's not a mobile home. I'm sorry, it's getting late.
Okay, and so, yeah, I, there's, I had some enforcement language, and we're done. If you, the establishment of a secondary dwelling unit which is non-compliance with the provisions of this section shall constitute a violation of zoning regulations. I mean, that's, we know that, so we may not need that, and just be subject to enforcement action, but it already, that's, we can put that out there again, or that, that just is kind of the way we do business, so.
You could put that on pretty much every section of the zoning ordinance, couldn't you?
Right, it would be good to have like an enforcement section in our zoning ordinance, separate, and not have it be embedded in a specific...
Agreed.
Okay, good, now. Yay! You guys are amazing. Do you have anything else for us? Are we finished?
So do they have to, do they have to, did you have a resolution or something with this to move this to city council? Or we just want to get a motion from them to move it to city council with the recommended changes?
We want to get a motion to move it. I mean, I do have a resolution here.
I wasn't sure, I couldn't remember, I'm sorry.
Yes. And we could use this resolution with attachment A and changes as discussed.
As, yeah, as discussed and directed.
So we need a motion to forward it to council, right, with the changes?
Yeah, to adopt. I mean, I think maybe we have a resolution that does that, and so it would be with the, what'd you say, with the changes?
With the changes as discussed.
Okay, so I'll move that we adopt resolution number PC 01-16 with the changes that were discussed and hopefully inscribed correctly.
I'll second. You have a motion and a second? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, voice vote? All those in favor, you want a roll call?
Voice vote would be fine.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0.
5-0, thank you so much.
I need a motion to go past 11 o'clock?
Yes, we do. This looks pretty quick.
This should be, this should, this should take five minutes.
Do I, do we have a motion?
I move we keep going past 11 o'clock.
Till 11:13. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, well, that was the most grudging aye I've ever heard. Well, that was the most grudging aye I've ever heard.
I was trying not to torture you.
Okay, this is, this is agenda item number C1 regarding sale of, disposition of vacant city-owned property at 1326 Main Street, and Scott Graham is going to tell us about this.
So this is similar to the Mendoro lots, property, the City Council's directed sale of the city-owned lot that sits at 1326 Main, and that's adjacent to the Lemos property. You can see the sort of offset lot like that, that's not how it's located, but our GIS is a little bit, is not rectified in that location, so it's a little bit off. But that's where it is, it's that piece that's out there. It is currently for sale. This is a parcel map, parcel map that was done for it, the lot, after the parcel map split off was done, that parcel two went over to the Lemos lots as part of this parcel map. The resulting lot is 9,881 square feet. As with the Mendoro lots, Government Code 65401A requires that the Planning Commission review any purchase of new property or disposition or sale of property for conformance with the general plan requirement, with conformance with the general plan. The property currently has a general plan land use designation of commercial service with a zoning designation of C2, which is general commercial. The general plan contains no policies that suggest properties to be utilized for any other purpose, and the Planning Commission therefore can make the requisite findings that it's consistent with the general plan for sale. And staff does recommend that you adopt resolution 3-16, making that finding. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I do have a point there. Just a clarification, in the staff report, it's code section 6502A, not 650, 65401A. So I just want to make sure that we're going through the right code. That's it.
Okay.
Scott, this is not in the PD overlay, right?
No.
No.
Has, has this been considered for any other uses through the city?
By the city, no. By other agencies, meaning Slocog, they identified it as a potential rideshare lot.
That's what I was thinking, it would be a great, great spot for a rideshare. We don't have another spot.
They actually identified a couple of locations in, in Moro Bay for rideshares, this was one of them. There's a couple other ones.
Scott, is that Esha next to it there?
Nope.
Okay.
That determination was made through the Lemos development process, so no, it's not.
Okay.
I had the same question.
So what would be the process of creating a rideshare parking lot on this, this site?
The City Council will decide they want one there.
But they want to sell it at this point.
But they want to sell it. I, I didn't know about the, the rideshare thing until today. Literally, Slocog sent me, John D'Anizio, Moro Bay resident, works for Slocog, sent me an email and said, hey, you don't have anything that the general plan says, do you use this for something else? And I was like, no, we don't. And he's like, well, we identified in our 2013 rideshare plan. I was like, well, that was nice of you. I talked to the city manager about it, too, as well, to see if there was, I mean, the council made the decision to sell it. But I wasn't, but I wanted to inquire to see if there was any discussion, you know, about that, and, and predating that there hadn't been, so.
It seems like this would fit into our, was it our 918, SB 918, their greenhouse reduction?
It could, I mean, like I said, there was other areas that were denoted for potential locations, so this was one of, I think, three or something.
Where, where does the money from the sale go to?
General fund. My guess is, though, I mean, one of the things we've talked about for some of the sale of these properties, right now, we don't have a buyer for this. We do, we, we did have a buyer for the Mendoro lot, and I believe that's closed. It was the, just for your knowledge, it was the couple that came that one day.
Oh, cool. Excellent. Hey, they did get it?
Yeah, they got it, yeah.
Oh, right on.
That's kind of a, maybe a good story, maybe, yeah. So anyway, but we don't have a buyer for this one right now, and I think our engineering division's going to do a little work about identifying some of the property corners, because one of the issues with folks that have looked at it is, we don't know where the property starts and stops, but we have set the corners out there because we did the parcel maps, so we'll be able to locate it, and so they'll, they'll know from now on, maybe. No, it's not very big.
This is, well, personally, I mean, I'll just, personally, I see no problem with selling it, I'll vote for that, but, but I do, I do think it's reasonable to consider the fact that this is, this is a gateway to the city. I mean, when you're coming off of Highway One to the Main Street exit, you're looking right there. When you're making a turn going south, and, and I think that it would be nice if we could make the council aware that, that, that we see it as such, and that we hope they will be careful in, you know, how they dispose of it, in terms of the appearance of the community, et cetera.
I don't know, I mean, the, I guess I don't want to say it. That part of town has a lot of underdeveloped, underappreciated properties.
So it's an older light industrial area, I mean, you got a bunch of properties that have been used for that function, and they tend to have been around for a long time. We don't have a whole lot of newer stuff over there.
But it is nice, you know, the, the adjacent owner did a spectacular job, given the nature of what's in that zone right now, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah. But it's problematic because of the, the exit, the entrance ramp right there.
Yes, it is. That, that's the whole configuration and how you, and how you'll get in and out of that is, is not going to be an easy solve, you know, it is, you're not going to be able to put anything there that's very large, because it's only, it's just under 10,000 square feet. I mean, it's going to be something that's relatively small.
Yeah, I don't have any trouble with selling it, though.
I don't have, I don't have any trouble with them selling it, it just seems like it'd be more apt for a, you know, whatever, whatever gets put on there, the parking, the turnaround, the site development is going to be really, really tough, and I, you know, I think it could be better served as either, you know, rideshare lot, or, you know, once again, maybe the adjacent property owner, or, or as a, you know, as a, you know, entry park or something there.
I mean, as this moves forward, because we don't have any interest in the lot right now, you know, we potentially, because we still own it, you know, they'll, some of this, you know, will get further discussion through the general plan update process and land use discussion. And it may get very, because that 2013 Slocog plan will become part of the review process for this, as part of the circulation element. Those are all things we're going to be doing in the front end of that, so, I mean, there's probably going to be more discussions about that moving forward, unless somebody pops up out of the blue and decides to buy it, but, again, there, you've, you've identified that it's a difficult site to develop, and it is for a number of reasons.
So do we have a, I'm sorry, if there's no further discussion, do we have a motion?
I move we approve Planning Commission Resolution 3-16.
A second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero.
Great, thank you.
And with that, we will declare the Planning Commission meeting adjourned to our next regular meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. I was, I was, I was trying to sneak it in there. Okay, we have no unfinished business. This is the time for Planning Commissioner comments? This is the time for Community Development Manager comments?
I got nothing.
Okay, now we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, January 19th, same time, same channel.